We're on call, we give the order to stand if you are able for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Yusuf Abramson?
Here.
Bessler?
Here.
Okay, we're going to start with our favorite part of our agenda for our school board meetings, and we're so thrilled to have you in person to do it for the first time this year. It's District 207's best, and this month it's for academic achievement. And we're going to start with Main West.
All right, I am honored to present Fatiksha Batacharya tonight as Main West honorary for 207's best for academic achievement. The first thing Fatiksha said when I shared with her that she's been named for this recipient, for this award this month was, "I have been so lucky." Over the course of our conversation, she used that word a lot. She described herself as deeply lucky throughout the pandemic. "I haven't lost anything that I can't get back," she said. "We've made it this far. We just have to keep moving forward, looking ahead." And she advises that we be respectful of this experience but not captured by it. And she talked about the silver lining of her family and how they found togetherness during COVID shutdowns in their increased time at home. They're both accomplished researchers, and so her parents instilled this experimental approach to her baking and were her testers in efforts to improve upon and recreate recipes of their favorite bakeries. She spoke of her gratitude to them for passing on their language and culture, for teaching her that love is expressed through quality time and acts of service. She explained that in their home language, Baghla, a direct translation of "I love you" does not exist. I've never physically, literally said "I love you" to my parents, but I have said it so many different ways. She is the designated Saturday lunch cook specializing in Mexican cuisine and is learning to make their favorite Indian foods for dinner. Fatiksha expressed deep gratitude for fluency in their language and for her understanding that she can find lots of ways to connect with the diverse world. She gratefully described her parents as "not huggy, but wise people who know many forms of love." Fatiksha said she is now lucky to know those forms as well. She also expressed gratitude, too, for teachers. "I have been lucky to have teachers willing to meet outside of class, to go in during lunch or morning office hours. My teachers give me more effort than I could have asked for. They cared through the struggle, so I couldn't give up. I had to do more than just pass, but do my best to deeply understand what was important." She loved that two of her teachers asked her to open the year, "What kind of problems do you like to solve?" Fatiksha felt drawn to healthcare, but whether that's in practice, policy, or medical technology development remains to be seen. She shadowed an endocrinologist and had a solid experience with keeping her options open. "I love to learn what people need, to look at intersections. One size will never fit all. Every person has situations that affect how we serve them." Fatiksha's mission comes from this fundamental insight. She embraces a diverse world and brings formidable problem-solving skills and passion to serving it. At Main West, Fatiksha has consistently been challenged in the most rigorous courses we offer, and she has mastered them flawlessly. She is a National Honor Commended student. She is in Link Crew, Coach Tutors, Key Club, Math Team, Medical Club, The Westerner, the Indian Student Association, and the Math Science and Social Science Honor Society, oh, and in addition to the National Honor Society. Her teachers have consistently admired her effort, persistence, and devotion to learning. Mr. Fleming recounted that Fatiksha was, quote, "absolutely freaked out" in the beginning of the year when she learned that the class is a language immersion class. She told me that it upset her so much she cried about it. To her credit, she stuck with it, persevered, and became one of the strongest speakers, listeners, writers, and readers in the class. She was integral to our positive classroom culture and community, and she was simply one of the strongest learners in the class. Mr. Serena remembers Fatiksha as a sophomore in AP Bio with a sea of seniors. She quickly made friends and was definitely an active contributor to her lab group and class as a whole. She worked very hard, earned excellent grades, and definitely deserves praise for her effort. Ms. Marie describes Fatiksha as an intellectual force, one who leads through a calm certitude in her hard work and dedication to excellence. In our class, others clearly held high regard for her opinion and wit, which she always delivers with a warm smile. Mr. Gray confided that he has never encountered a student more determined to push herself to perform at the highest level. With assignment after assignment, she came in during office hours to ask for help. She has the highest expectations for herself and is committed to live up to them, yet she is also personable, friendly, and kind. She inspired others in her sophomore English class with her focus and work ethic. Mr. Krasinski vividly remembers how engaged Fatiksha was in discussion. She wanted to see and understand everything. As a student, it was apparent that the high value Fatiksha placed on her education. She did all of her best work, her best work, all of the time and was very successful as a result. Mr. Russell was happy to point out that Fatiksha showed clear motivation for self-improvement and helping others in a way that illustrated her personal belief statement, in which she wrote that her guiding principles in life are to be open to the other side of an argument, treat people with kindness, and always have short and long-term goals. Can't go wrong. We know that people who have learned how to feel gratitude for their blessings walk through the world as happier people than those who have not mastered that skill. Consistently, persistently, in the face of challenges and setbacks, grateful people find the strength in themselves and the people around them to move forward and find joy where it can be found. We honor Fatiksha tonight because she has mastered every lesson, every challenge we could set before her in her time at Main West, including the most crucial lessons of boldness and perspective, of loss and luck, of service and gratitude. So congratulations, Fatiksha, and thank you for all your work. Will you just come up and get your award? Who do you have with you here tonight?
Um, my dad and my mom.
Okay, great. And do you have plans for next year yet?
Um, just going to college and applying.
Yeah. Good. Congratulations.
Okay, Main South.
All right. This evening for Main South, we have Mr. Darren Chang as our board recipient for 207's best in academic achievement. Darren is one of the students, when you sit down and talk to him, you figure out in two seconds that he is smarter than you and can basically do anything. And so when I had the opportunity to get to know him a little bit better for this evening in talking through his accomplishments, they really are wide and they span not only math and science, but also in politics and languages and in some of the other aspects like Southwards. So he really can do it all. So even from his freshman year, when he won and received some regional award recognition in Midwest Chinese speech competitions, to where he was a member of Mathletes Model U.N. and Chinese Club in the sophomore year, where he was a Science Department Award winner in AP Physics I, also joining Southwards in the commentary section. Junior year, earning another Science Department Award winner in AP Chemistry, and then he became an editor at Southwards, which is a really big deal at Main South, and then became a Secretary of NHS, President of the Chinese Club, joined the Chinese National Honor Society and Science National Honor Society. So he's really done it all across a lot of different areas of our school. He also has a near-perfect SAT score, perfect, I believe, in the math and science area and just amazing academic record. He's never received a B in a class in his life. I asked him that, and he was like, "Ever?" I was like, "Yeah, ever." He's like, "No, no." And it was, he's also, just like our, just like our award winner from Main West, just something that resonates in every single comment here is that he's really, really kind. He just is a great student and a great person. When I was asking him about, you know, "You've got this literally perfect academic record that is going to be amazing when you leave here. What drives you to do all this work? I'm sure you don't sleep much." And he just said, "I just really like reaching my full potential, and I think I can do that here at school." And so we're really happy to have you back in the school, Darren, and doing all these great things. So let me just read a few comments from some of the people who recognize you. First of all, from your counselor, Mrs. Sanchez, she said that Darren Chang is a remarkable, talented, and accomplished student. He has earned straight A's in the most difficult classes available to him. He even took two math classes at the same time sophomore year. His standardized test scores are also very impressive, taking 10 AP tests already, not even a senior, 10 AP tests already himself in all of them, and his ACT score is nearly perfect. And in addition to his academic excellence, Darren is also kind, polite, personable, and is involved in a number of activities at South. This semester, he is doing an internship to help a faculty member with a student tutoring program, in which case he actually runs the website for our student tutoring program, and that's great that he gets to do that and contribute to our internship program, and also a member of Southwards. Darren is truly one of 207's best. Priscilla Chow, his accelerated Mandarin Chinese four teacher, says Darren has been an outstanding student in Chinese. He worked ahead at his own pace and skipped a grade in Chinese, and he is working independently to study for the AP Mandarin Chinese exams here. On top of that, he's been a leader in Chinese club for many years now. Besides just academic achievement, though, Darren is friendly and inclusive based in the classroom, and I am proud of his character as well. Darren, your accelerated bio teacher, Mrs. Capes, said, "He is one of the strongest students I've ever had," and she has had the best students that we've had academically at Main South. "He is always striving to improve and utilize all the constructive feedback provided to him. I thoroughly enjoy reading his thoughtful responses to questions and listening to him discuss topics with his classmates. And not only is Darren intelligent, he is also incredibly kind. I am not surprised that he was chosen for this honor." Finally, Mr. Stodakis, Darren's accelerated English I teacher and Southwards advisor, says Darren demonstrates exemplary skill in all the language arts standards that we address throughout our curriculum, but better than that, his classroom presence and participation promotes discussion and improves the experience for his peers. Furthermore, his well-roundedness and interest in a variety of academic fields brings much-needed perspective to conversations. Because of the depth of thought that I saw in his verbal and written expression, I encourage Darren to join Southwards, for which he has been an editor during his junior and senior years. His dependability and consistency were crucial as the newspaper navigated online publishing during the pandemic, and his leadership this year will be just as indispensable as we resume regular print publication. So Darren, I think it's suffice to say that you are going to do amazing things when you leave our school district. And when I was talking to you about some of the elements that you wanted to combine, possibly in your studies with some of your minors, could you just tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, sure. So I was thinking of going into like an applied math field in college, and, you know, it's a bit difficult to see what I really want to do just yet. I feel like that's just a great way for me to solidify my interests and find that specific niche I fit into.
Yeah, because there's so many things you could, you could go into with that. Excellent. And can you tell us who's here with you tonight?
Sure, yeah. My mother and father are sitting right next to me.
Awesome. And then so applied mathematics and then applying to schools is essentially what we're doing right now?
Yep.
Excellent. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations again. Our Main East recipient is going to be given out at our October meeting. Just, I respect her observance of Rosh Hashanah. And for the rest of you, congratulations again. Now's your opportunity to step out in the hall and take some pictures if you want and leave the meeting. You're welcome to come back in, but we're okay if you do not. Congratulations again, and it's such an honor to be here today. Do you have any public comments? Update from the superintendent?
Okay, just, we, between last meeting and this meeting, we obviously, you know, the Democratic governor's mandate on masking and then followed that up with a mandate on vaccinations. So we evaluated that here as a team and made a decision that because of the scope of the testing requirement for that, we felt like it was right then to give the mandate vaccinations for our staff, which we have subsequently done. The governor has now issued a two-week extension to his original mandate. We're going to honor that two-week extension, too. So George is in pretty much daily contact with the union. We're working through that. The good news is we got a, we have a very high rate of vaccinations among our teaching staff and among our TAs, and we actually, most of our unvaccinated staff are folks like outside coaches and, and outside people that aren't in all the time or their seasons are seasoned to a way. So we'll continue to try to figure that out and then support people to get vaccinated and figure out the testing protocol once that's done. But that said, it's really nice to have Students of the Month again.
Yes.
It's really nice to have our, our schools full of students. It is really, really nice to go in and see the work that has taken place in our buildings and see the progress in the buildings. Board members, if you've not seen it for a while, you want to get in and see a person because it is, it is just amazing how things, how things have come. And then our staff has just been tremendous this year. So good start, good start, hoping for continued improvement in all things related to school.
I echo all that and commend Superintendent Wallace and all of you who are administration and the principals. They're outside now. I will.
Well, we do have Becky here today. She's a stand-in for my, I don't know.
Yes, yes, I do know that. And but to just commend all of you for the start of a big school year, of a second-long year, and all the great work that you're doing. And George, thank you for your leadership and promise, recommendations and work. So thank you.
So quickly, I go to that it was very impressive that Dr. Ken's leadership with everyone to coordinate with the business activity years with COVID. And I talk to, whenever I can, talk to a few young students from both channels, but I'm not myself. And then they were shown very, that the school's leadership has been providing such a great service that they are greatly too able to come and able to attend the school as well. So the school system is very good to, good things to hear from the students.
Thank you. And Ben and I think you were on the road, but I complimented you. Thank you for your leadership, starting this year, the last two years, for all you've done in all your, throughout your career, but especially just this year, getting us started and navigating that. So we're very grateful. And of course, Mary, I'm just going to thank you all, Mary, for your continued work on that, the whole construction. I can't wait till I am going to go in schools, we're going to hear again and see all the great progress on the floor. Any updates from any other board members?
I would like to take that opportunity to say thank you to our superintendent, Dr. Wallace, his associate superintendent, and the principal of the high schools and all the staff who worked to create the advisory program that has been implemented in each school this fall. I believe you've gone above and beyond to create a new program that supports all students in a really special way. This gives students the opportunity to connect and learn from one another in intimate ways that will help them practice their interpersonal skills and to nurture in a smaller environment. This advisory program will give them valuable information in a more strategic manner that would not occur in pre-COVID. I applaud all of you for making something wonderful come out of last year, and I think it will be a great success for students. My son has already recommended the program, and also listening to Dr. Collins talk about it at the teacher night was really wonderful. And again, I just really want to say thank you because I think it's going to be an amazing program for all.
We're looking at some good work inside, especially that, I mean, all of the tier-one like career things that we're able to do there. I can't wait to see. I think we'll get better and better and better. So thank you for that. That's nice to hear. Right on.
Any other board members? Finance committee update?
Sure. So the finance committee was held on August 29th, and members present were myself, Jill Lee, and Sheila Yoder, Gail Wilson. And it was called order at 5:00 PM, and there were no public comments. There were two things on the agenda. The first was the 2022 budget and Assistant Superintendent Business Committee moved, updated the committee on changes to that budget, specifically donations for the Main South fitness center equipment will be added as revenue and the purchase of equipment processes and expense. Other COVID-related expenses include an increase in special education services and staffing costs due to the new law on aging out as well as placement tuition for special education students. Some virtual classes will be added for medically fragile students unable to attend in-person classes and other planned district-wide virtual classes. The district will go out to bid on bus companies as their current provider has closed down their business, unfortunately. Three additional E to passenger vans may be added to the budget with the help, to help with small group transportation. We also discussed the special milk program. Prior to the 2022 school year, the district participated in a federal special milk program, but for the past school year, the district participated in seamless summer meals program allowing remote pickup of meals, but we're moving back to the special milk program where the district has reimbursed about 19 cents for each pint of milk sold to the students. The district is recommending that we continue participation in this program for the 2022 school year. There was no further business to be discussed, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:12 PM.
Thank you. And the Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mary?
Yes, the Buildings and Grounds Committee was held on August 9th. Members present were Terry Collins, Linda Coyle, and Ashley Kilburg. The meeting was called to order at 5:13 PM. There were no public comments. Rob Martinelli with Pepper Construction provided an update on the summer construction project. At that time, we were finishing all of the schools, so we were installing some temporary items that were going to have to be installed late, which is our handrails, but we installed temporary ones to get the start of the school and make sure the schools were in safe condition. At South, the new kitchen and cafeteria was a main focus at the end of August, as well as some finishing up of A Wing. At West, the site worker on Field House was finishing up as well as A Wing and L Wing. The D Wing bus canopy fence and gate will be installed in September, and the rest of the materials for the project have been purchased and were stored to make sure that we don't have any delay in that. The next item was the summer project update. We had several summer projects going on in addition to facility master plan. They included field turf replacement at Main South, Main South theater rigging equipment as well as roofing skylight work. These projects have all been completed with the exception of the stage rigging, which was scheduled to go late, but is going even a little bit later than we'd like to see due to some COVID delays in materials. Dr. Collins thanked everyone for all of their hard work on this, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:50, 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Education committee, all right?
Yes. The Education Committee met on August 17th. Present at the meeting were myself and Sheila Yusuf Abramson. The meeting was called to order then through three. There were no public comments. Assistant Superintendent Curriculum and Innovation, Dr. Messner. We started out talking about textbook adoption, and he reviewed English novels that will be added to the curriculum as class and choice reads. He also provided us with a remote learning update, and that at that time was that district-wide 61 students have opted to stay remote, less than 1% of our total enrollment. All 61 will have access to at least one class with our staff virtually and otherwise will attend Illinois Virtual School. Students will stay connected to their school with the same counselor, teacher/teacher to support their social, emotional needs. Dr. Messner also gave us a curriculum update, including the following. In math, Math 3 and Math 3 Compression will launch this year. Math 3 is focused on preparing students for college math in non-STEM fields, and Math 3 Compression is focused on preparing students for college math in STEM-related fields. In English, the English department has begun the process of developing four-year competencies in English. In social science, there will be a shift of US history to the sophomore year from the junior year, creating an intro to psych course and opening electives up to all students rather than restricting them to certain grade levels as in the past. In fine arts, they are beginning of the process of developing Speech 103 as a dual-credit course with Oakton. And in career and technical education, they have begun developing a new dual-credit course, which is exploring the teaching profession with St. Francis University. This will become part of our education pathways. He also provided an instructional service update regarding the new school links program. That's going to be demonstrated at the next Education Committee meeting, which is, I believe, now set for September 21st at 8:30 AM for anyone who's interested. There being no further items. I adjourn the meeting at 10:15.
10:16. Monthly status of finances, Superintendent.
In your fourth packet is the July financial statements. On the revenue side, we are trending slightly lower in our July collections as compared to the past two years. That's property taxes. It's just a matter of timing. We anticipate collecting a regular collection of taxes. It's just sometimes there's some adjustments month to month based on tax bills and when people pay. On the expenditure side, we are in line with what we've seen over the last two years. It is the very first month of the fiscal year, so other than those trends, there's not much of a trend to show you. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the July financial statements.
All right, instructional services, Sean.
No report this month.
For your request, please.
We had three this month involving the target.
And then textbook adoption, first reading, Sean.
So as noted, in the Egg Committee minutes, we did go over this in our Egg Committee on August 17th. Included in your board packet is a mellow, which also includes the addition of several novels that'll be used as either all-class or choice reads with our students. And so if you'd like to look at the titles, there's brief descriptions there as well as the rationale for the selection of the novel. And when you see a cost there, that's a total cost for the district. That's not, so when you see something like $3,600 in the first one, that's divided over all the students that would be accessing that novel. So if you're looking for a per-book cost, it's about $9 a book or so, in some cases even less. So I'll entertain any questions you might have on any of the novels or the process.
And again, this is first reading. We'll vote on it next. So you can read this. Any more members who haven't had a chance yet to read this and have questions? Close up the shot before we vote on it next month. Any questions left? Okay, we have a motion on, moving on to our consent agenda, we have a motion on A through G. Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Moving on to approval of District 207's budget for 2021, 2022. Can somebody make a move, move to a motion on this and read the full recommendation? Would I do so?
I can make the motion. It is the recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving the 2021, 2022 District 207 budget with revenues of $2,249,941,787 and expenditures of $202,966. A public hearing on the District 207 budget for 2021, 2022 was held on August 2nd, 2021.
Do you have a second? So we, we had the public hearing last month. We've had multiple discussions on this. Are there any other additional questions or comments? Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
We have a motion on number 10, resolution adopting annual Board of Education travel expenses. This is Mary. Do you want to explain this to Mr. Schuster?
Sure. The, this resolution is part of the local government travel spending control act. It requires us each year to pass a legislative.
It requires us each year to pass a resolution documenting what the total reimbursement for each board member could be in one given year, as well as the overall travel budget for the entire school district.
And so just as a history of the, like, seven years ago, maybe this began a war and we did this annually, we have never, ever, ever even come close to, I think, a spending for a board. But what we do budget for is we assume if all seven board members went to the National School Association, for example, that budget, what we give, we flex that, which we've never done, which may become the year or four that most ever done.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Collins? Collins? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
She's here. Carrie. She's got her camera turned off. She's there though. I guess you're gonna skip her.
I'll be back. Vessler. Yeah.
Oh, she said aye. She texted me.
Okay.
She's back now.
Sorry, I, I, something happened to my connection. I'm sorry.
So you're an aye on number ten?
Aye.
Number ten. Are you an aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Make that a difference. Thank you. Moving on to approval of bids and awarding of contracts. Eleven, do we have a motion on eleven A in the Special Education Outside Placement Tuition Agreement?
So, second.
Okay, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So as we've entered into agreement in the past, we're asking the Board to approve agreement for tuition for Northwest Southern Special Education Organization. This again is another facility that we utilize in order to support our students that have complex learning needs and needs are not able to be met within district. We have the same number of students that we had last year, as well as an aide and a nurse as well.
Is the budget changed? Has the amount changed? Was the difference from last year?
That's a great question. So it is up about eighty thousand, and that is really attributed to just the year-to-year difference for salaries for all of the staff involved. But it's the same number of students. We had one student age out and one student who entered.
Could also fluctuate if the services were slightly different.
If the service.
Correct.
Like if you had another Program A or something like that.
Or if we had a move-in. With the last five years, what's the range of numbers to use? Did it extend to eleven?
I would say, yeah, between like eleven to twelve. I mean, it's really been around the same for the last few years.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
It hasn't drastically changed.
No, I didn't think so. Any other questions, Collins?
I always just like to ask, do you think anything different in the agreement itself that you know of?
No.
Has any of that been changed?
We did have a couple of things added just to maintain control of the IEP decisions. So we had some of those pieces just changed a little bit, so that we as a district maintained that control.
Okay.
That was the only thing that was adjusted.
Okay. Thank you. Have they not?
We, we have. There was just some wording in there that just more clearly articulates our responsibility and our ability to collaborate with the team. And so it was just a wording change. We've always had collaboration with the team. It just helped clarify it a little bit better in the agreement.
I would be interested in reading that just from my own knowledge, because I'm just interested in that area. If the rest of the Board is interested and for any reason looking at that, can you just send it to us?
Yeah. Yeah. I think we have it. Yeah, it's just a.
The changes, but what was changed?
Oh, what was changed? Yes, I think, I can share that with you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because I won't take the time to sit down and clarify it if you, if you have it, if it's easy to do.
Yeah, if you work for Dana, she's probably got a markup version.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's like one, two words.
Sure. That's all. Thank you. If anyone else wants to. Okay. Okay. Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do we have a motion on eleven B, Quest Food Service Amendment Contract?
Second.
So similar to last year, we are doing an amendment because we continued curbside remote meal service through August, and this amendment covers that timeframe. We put pricing in there for the whole year should the need arise for us to get back into this program at some point this year. We, this amendment would cover that as well.
Any questions or comments for Mary? Collins?
Collins?
Terry, what's your vote on?
I'm sorry. You didn't hear me. Aye.
Aye. Great. No problem. You know what? I'm gonna keep you as we're voting. I'm gonna make you look at me.
Thank you.
Make, being the operating word.
I have a very lovely, fashionable mask on that I want you to compliment me with. Okay. Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do we have a motion on eleven C, Charter Bus Contact? Some of. Second.
The charter bus company that has served the district for over twenty years closed their doors this year. As you're aware, there's an extreme shortage of drivers, so we quickly put a bid on the street for charter bus services. We contacted every company we could think of. We made personal phone calls to them, and we received one bid. The bid was from M&amp;M Limousine Company. They were the second-low bidder. Last spring when we did this, we spent the last several days working with them, making sure that we got the forms we needed for the state to do, enter into a contract with a non-school bus company, and as well as making sure that they complied with the bid specifications. So at this point, we are recommending their bid for the next three years.
Thank you so much for hearing that. We definitely need a solution. Teams are having to forfeit competition because we don't have buses to transport students. Parents are having to leave work early. Students are getting to events late and stressed, so I appreciate you trying to find a solution.
Of course, there's just one more question. I've been seeing so many bus schools having a great hardship recruiting the bus employees. So whenever I go to like big, huge events or free market or anywhere, there's always this boot saying we are student-first and pay high straight per hour and try to really recruit the bus drivers. We're keeping the driving lesson classes and all the things. So we are trying to see more of a challenge related to these issues. So we really need to closely work with those bus schools so that students can safely able to receive all the maximized transportation services however we can. But thank you for this, you know, working with those bus companies.
Sounds like we would. Yes. So, you know, I think, I'm gonna be, as I pulled the parent on the phone, I'm gonna be completely honest and say I think we're still gonna have issues. I, we are actively.
We're still gonna have to work.
Issues. I mean, it's just, it's one company. There are, there are few backup companies with a COVID environment canceling. They may have to cancel at last minute. We go scrambling, which is what happened with the last five days. So we're actively looking at how we can protect the environment by activity buses to the fullest extent possible and kind of minimize things. And we're working very closely with the vendor to get coverage for events and matching buses with the number of students and timing and everything. So I just think it will continue to evolve until this national shortage is somehow resolved.
But I guess we just need to get that message out. I think you said pass on that a little bit to the teams, things, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, coaches' cell phone numbers are on the bus orders now so that if something happens, we're communicating correctly with the coaches. We're, we're trying to work together to make sure that we have as much information as possible.
That's a good point to manage expectations moving forward. And it's not just because of your size or whether you're moving older.
So sometimes don't we have a coach just driving a smaller-sized bus?
That's why I do the buses.
Because I do see, not a, not a school district, but other non-who-service service organizations who need to boss in these seniors and elders, and I do see that sometimes even the employees staff who actually have to drive to the pickup services and other stuff, you can see that it's well.
And our duty too. So, for example, in, within Special Education, our teachers and teacher systems have driven for many, many years to do student program every day-to-day. Our coaches have always driven the small buses after school to events where possible. It's just that, you know, some of the team sizes have gotten, you know, a football team, for example, could take a couple buses to haul that many kids. So it's just, it's a, it's a scope issue.
And also buying the school, the buses, transportation buses itself from the dealers are taking such a long, long time. One of my church group trying to purchase a buses, fifteen-person van, and we shop through, we shop around here, and most of all the dealers saying that they cannot find within the radius of a couple hundred miles per se. And if you need to order, if you order a brand-new one, then it costs, I mean, the, the time taking that will be at least minimum six months plus. And then all the used car, fifteen-man used car, even the costs are higher raised also. So we gotta look at different options this time. But those are the issues that we have to deal with.
Well, thank you for all your comments and all your hard work and data's done, and hopefully we will all have patience and collaboration moving forward as these issues continue to arise, especially around this, because they will be there. So we can take the vote. Kilburg?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna take the Facilities Fee Waiver, twelve, since they're all related to Main West, we'll take them collectively together. So do I have a motion on twelve A through E on Facility?
Some of.
Okay. And then I, do you want to, I know four of them are with the Displaced Park District and one's with Concordia. Do you want to just summarize them?
Right, yeah, they're, they're pretty standard. It's nice to be able to welcome these programs back again. And, you know, we've had good relationships with the EPPD for a long time, so it's nice to have them back.
So these are all repeats?
And they will be very heavy to be using. Yeah, the Field House, they're thrilled.
Yeah. I'm so excited.
Not a big deal, but there we go. The first four waivers, it says free instead of fee. The last one does not. The last one says fee, but the first four say free, free waiver.
Well, it's free. Thank you. Okay.
I would see that. No, I, so I just had a comment. I'm very excited for this partnership. I know it's been ongoing, but I also just want to kind of stress too, and just kind of holding to the same standards Main West has for the safety of their students, but also, you know, the different ways that are participated in. You know, because I know sometimes park districts can be very different from school buildings and school districts, so I just want to make sure we're thinking about that as well.
I know Jared goes over those things with them when they, when they undertake the agreement. Honestly, I can't say that we actually go and enforce them ourselves, but I know he goes over the protocol very strictly.
And actually, I talked to the person today that's doing this Concordia program, and they were told coming in about the protocol for your building. So I, I just happen to be talking to that professor about something else, so he had mentioned that. So I felt like Wes has done a good job of that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay. Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay.
Good job, everybody.
All right, do I have a, we're gonna go back on. Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Some of.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Jen, be to it.
I don't have any.
Collins?
Aye.
Collins? Terry, are you in favor of returning to open session?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion on Personnel Action Item Seventeen A through F? Some of. Second.
Second.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
All right, there's, let's see here, other informational, this is just items informational. George, do you want to share the two compliance reports that we have to publish and that were published?
Yes.
And kind of background of that for those who don't know.
So this report is a, it's a manual report regarding administrative salaries. So it's labeled EIS Administrative Teacher Salary Benefits Report, School Year Twenty Twenty-One. Again, we're required every year to post this information. Now, entertain any questions.
In Public Act Ninety-seven oh-two-five-six, does that have a name? Is it just a, you know, like, is that?
I don't know. I have to look.
I'll look. It's always been called that. Yeah, okay.
So generally, George, any district, any school district, if we would like to know, say, what is average teacher?
It's, it's all on the website. You can go to any website.
With their names too?
Yes.
Yes, this is that report right here.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been in seventy years at least.
Yep. Okay. There's no other business that we have to vote on, made on a post. Do I have a motion on Nineteen A Approval of Closed Session Minutes? Actually, do I have a motion on Nineteen A, one through three?
Three.
Approval of Closed Session Minutes?
Coyle, move.
Second. Coyle?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Terry?
Aye.
She's a little frozen, I think.
Aye.
Okay.
Hear me?
Yes. Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Vessler?
Aye.
Do we need a random spot? Yeah, but should we very much?
Should.
Okay. So I need a motion on number twenty in Closed Session Minutes, semi-annual review. In making the motion, please read the recommendation A through D.
I move with respect to the Board of Education confirming confidentiality of the Board's Closed Session Minutes. That the minutes or portions of minutes on Attachment A no longer require confidential treatment and are to be.
Terry, are you in favor of returning to open session?
Yeah. Aye.
Thank you. Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion on Personnel Action Items 17A through F? Some of them. Second. Youssef Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
All right, there's, let's see here, other informational, this is just items informational. George, do you want to share the two compliance reports that we have to publish and that were published?
Yes.
And kind of background of that for those who don't know.
So, this report is a, it's a manual report regarding administrative salaries. So, it's labeled EIS Administrative Teacher Salute Benefits Report, School Year 2021. Again, we're required every year to publish this information. Any questions?
And Public Act 9702567 name? Is it just a, do you know, like, is that?
I don't know. I need to, I have to look at that.
I'll look at it. It's always been called. Yeah, okay.
So, generally, George, any district, any school district, if we would like to know, say, what is average teacher?